Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
6:30, and so just make sure we have everyone. Jack, Hardy, Lynn's here, Priscilla, Jigs, Chris Kibbie is here, Molly, Pam, I think, is on the board up there, there she is. Deb Wright is here, Cheryl, Karen.
I don't see Karen, yeah?
I don't see her.
No.
I don't see her.
No, Jen.
Yeah, no, we're good.
And those are the two on the WNU elementary.
They're the Westminster, yeah. So they're on the Westminster board. Good being 6:30, I'll call the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Board to order. So any adjustments to the agenda? Go ahead, Jack. You're on mute.
There we go. Yes, I think just to start the meeting off, we have reorganization of the board, but I'd like to put on there before communication and public comments, a board introduction, because I don't know that everybody knows who everybody is, or where they came from, or anything else they want to say.
That makes sense.
That sounds excellent. Everyone's in agreeance, then we'll go right there. Jack, you want to start us off?
Sure. My name is Jack Breyer. I am.
Hang on, Jack, Jack, hang on. Chris Kibbie, I want to cut him off too fast.
So 5G, boards are compelled to use Robert's Rules of Order by statute. It should say for small boards.
Small boards, yeah, that's the difference, yeah.
So 5G, we're just saying it would be adopt Robert's Rules for small boards.
Actually, Robert's Rules for small boards are within the whole thing, so you can say, paying attention to the others, but otherwise you don't want to preclude all the rules there for the other ones, so.
I'm going to beg people's indulgence, why don't we discuss that when we get to it?
Okay. So Jack, you want to start us off with introductions, please?
Sure. Hi, my name is Jack Breyer. I live in Grafton, Vermont, and I'm a member of the WNUESD Board and its Chair, and rep that board.
Do you want to, do we want to do a popcorn here, Jack? And you call out the next person, or do you want me to call?
Sure, why don't we go with Hardy Merrill? Hardy, you're going to unmute?
I had to unmute myself here. My name is Hardy Merrill. I'm from Grafton, Vermont. I'm a newbie on the board, and I'm looking forward to my term.
And Hardy, you want to call someone out?
How about Elise?
Hi, I'm Elise Manning Sterling. I'm on the WNUESD Board from Westminster. That's it.
All right. How about, I'll just call, Pam?
Hi, I'm Pamela Johnson-Sperlock. I live in Grafton. I am a parent, also a student at Grafton Elementary, and a former, a graduate of Grafton Elementary. I'm a former WNESU employee, and I'm an educator in a nearby district, and I'm happy to be on board. Thank you. Oh, and I, can I call on Chris Kibbie, because he was my former superintendent?
That's me. I'm Chris Kibbie, the former superintendent, but I'm now a board member for Rockingham. Right, I'm happy to be back that way, not the other way. Why don't we go with Parkus?
What'd you say?
Do you just want to introduce yourself, Brenda?
Oh, sure. My name's Brenda Parkus, and I'm from Rockingham, and I'm on the Bellas Falls Union High School Board in the WNESU.
And just because you joined us, Karen, would you like to introduce yourself real quick?
Karen, you're on mute.
She'll get it.
I don't think she did that. No, she's not getting it.
Hey, Karen, you got to unmute yourself.
Very much. Here we go. So I'm Karen Blanchard, and I am a member of the Westminster School Board.
Excellent, thank you.
I ended up looking up Google for you guys, because I didn't know, I didn't know there was a Zoom link not sent out, so there we go. Thank you.
Make sure you get it from now on, and we get it to you. So Molly?
Molly Bannock, I'm Bellas Falls High School School Board Chair, representing the town of Westminster.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board.
Jigs?
Jim, Jigs McCollum, I'm on the Rockingham Board.
Priscilla?
Priscilla Lambert, I'm the Chair of the Rockingham Board, and representing them at the SU. I'm also on the high school board, not representing them.
Lynn Morgan, I'm representing Athens on the WNUESD Board.
Deb?
Yes, and I'm Deb Wright, and I'm representing the Bellas Falls Union High School in Rockingham.
And I'm Andy Haas, I'm Superintendent of Schools. And David?
I'm David Clark. I am a member of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board, representing Westminster, however, I'm not a member of the WNESU Board.
And, and just because it's kind of my right-hand man, so I'll call him out, Ricky Adams, who's our IP Director, and I can't get the camera to go over there to him, but Ricky, Ricky makes all this happen, so if you have tech issues, don't call me, call Ricky. He seems to walk in the room and fixes, so.
Did you say that there were, there were two people, two board members that were there at Athens?
There's only one now.
Now there's only one.
Oh, there's only one.
Jeff Carlson.
Jeff Carlson from the Westminster Board is not there. Karen is from the Westminster.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And, and so just before we get into a point of order, just move on. Currently, the WNESU Board is a nine-member board, but when there are budgetary issues, the board increases to 12 to include the Westminster folks. So until July 1, so on July 1, the board will become a 12-member standing board. So, so we'll have that flux back and forth, but just so we kind of talk about that a little bit. So.
This is 14, I could 14.
Yeah.
Right, but they're not all voting members, so.
Right.
Right now, Elise isn't a voting member, Brenda isn't, and David isn't.
Well, Brenda, Brenda is.
Brenda is a voting member.
Brenda, and you and I are representatives from the high school.
He didn't, we, he did not list that, because we had nine people without Brenda Parkus on here. Pam Sperlock.
So it's Brendan, not Pam, is the voting member?
Oh, I thought it was Brenda.
Yeah, Brenda's the high school.
Is she? Okay, I thought, I thought it was Pam, too, because I had my mind notes the other night.
Perfect, so.
So who, who's on the 14?
Okay.
The Rockingham Board is me, you, and Chris. And Cheryl, who are your board members?
Present tonight, Karen Blanchard and me, Jeff Carlstrom isn't here, but he is our third member.
And from the UE Board? It's Jack, Hardy, and Lynn. And from the high school board, it's Molly, Brenda, and Deb.
Okay. I got confused. Pam was here, Brenda wasn't here.
Yeah, and then Priscilla and.
So you and Chris.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right.
Can't get confused.
Any communications from the public?
Yes, sir. David Clark, Westminster, and just a couple of things, and I don't know if the reformer got it wrong, once it was voted out by Rock Board, the teacher contract became a public document. That's something that board members should understand. But I'm also here on another topic, and what I'm here for is to talk about public accountability, and the length that we'll go to to avoid accountability from the state. The WNESU Board lacked a proper forum when it voted out the staff bonuses at its February 23rd meeting. The vote personnel and money matters, which affect Westminster School Board, the nine-member board, which is BFUHS, Rock, and Union Elementary, of which five members constitutes a forum, expands to a 12-member board, including Westminster, for a seven-member forum. With only five members in the room, when the vote was taken on those bonuses, a legal forum was not established. The Rockingham Board Chair was well aware of this conundrum, and made the claim that although a seven-member forum was required, the vote would in fact have to be taken with five members. You can watch her make this comment on the Fact TV link, which is now in your inbox. And then, there's the matter of the legal opinion about that forum, which the Rockingham Chair claimed was in hand before the WNESU bonus vote was taken. The claim by the Rockingham Chair that a legal opinion had been obtained, Westminster was not part of the required forum, was an outright. See that one for yourself on Fact TV. Thank you. Andy, I want to get on with the rest of my business.
Thank you, David.
Nice pleasure to see everyone.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, then I'm going to move on to 4A, that's reorganization of the board and election of the chairperson, so it will entertain motions. Molly?
I would like to nominate Jack Breyer as Chair.
Did you hear that?
Jack, Molly has nominated you, we just want to make sure you heard that, so.
Yeah, I heard that.
Any other nominations?
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Deb Wright.
Any other nominations? All right, hearing none. In Rockingham, we went to a secret ballot, I think it'd be hard to do a secret ballot with.
Oh, Zoom. We'll close our eyes while you.
Yeah, you guys write a piece of paper.
Because people on Zoom don't get a vote.
No, that's. We checked that one ahead of time.
Interesting.
I'm just kidding.
No, no, but we did actually check, we checked that, we actually checked that because of town meeting, where they, they made that, they made that ruling, and so we wanted to make sure we, for board meetings, we didn't have that same problem, and so we actually, the secretary of state was like, why are you asking? And we're like, because, and we got that ruling, so. So I guess, I'm trying to think, what is it, an equitable and fair way here?
Call it out and have people hold up their hand?
Yeah, I guess so.
Guess that's how it works.
And make sure Karen knows that we're not voting on this issue.
Yeah, so Karen, Westminster does not have a vote during this one, so we'll just be looking at those votes.
Yeah, I do know that, thank you.
I don't like it, it's uncomfortable, yeah.
All right, so we will start with, with the motion for Jeff Breyer. A show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, five, six.
So you need to take the other vote.
So, sounds like Mr. Breyer is.
Take the other vote.
Oh, we have to.
You have to take the other vote.
We have to take the other.
You have to.
Yeah.
I just think you need to, the difference is going to be, what, three?
We don't have small board rules yet.
Ah, okay, so, those in favor of Deb Wright for Chair? One, two, three, with Brenda on. So we have six votes for Jack Breyer and three for Deb Wright?
Yeah, long strange trip.
Mr. Breyer? Pass the gavel on to you, sir, and it's your meeting.
Oh, boy, all right. The, under 4B, the next item is election of Vice Chair. Does, does, is there any question from anyone as to what a Vice Chair does? Reese, okay, just want to make sure. Then, then we're open for nominations? And not hearing any, I'm going to, no, I'm going to step out briefly and nominate Molly Bannock.
And, sorry, Jack, you can't maybe see it, Jigs has his hand up?
I'm sorry, yeah, I really can't see the hands of people in physical attendance. My apologies, Jigs.
I was going to vote, I was going to nominate Deb Wright.
All right, so we have two nominations, one for Deb Wright and one for Molly Bannock. Are there any others? And I'm going to ask the indulgence of people to speak up, because on my screen, the members in attendance are about this high, and I can't really tell who they are and what they're saying.
Jack, just so people in the room know, when you speak in the room, the cameras will pick you up, so that's how they pick you up. So right now, it's just focus on Deb and I, you know.
I see that.
So.
Because I'm at the end of the row.
That's because we're talking too much.
Why can't you focus on Ricky over there?
Okay, I'm going to declare this out of order, guys. So we've got Molly, we've got Deb Wright. Are there any other nominations? And please speak up. All right, it seems that we have, those are our nominations, and I'm going to call the roll, and if, because I'm, you know, I can't see everybody, if I miss you, please say so. Hardy Merrill, what say you?
Deb Wright.
All right, one for Deb. Brenda Parkus, what say you?
Molly.
One for Molly. And see, gosh, I really cannot see who's on the screen. Would people in the room just declare yourselves and, and state your, your preference? Because I really, I'm, I am embarrassed, and will try to be there physically from this point forward. Well, who else we got in the room?
Oh, you want me to do a roll call, Jack? Would that be helpful?
That would really help me out.
Thank you.
So we had Brendan Hardy, correct? So Lynn?
Molly.
Priscilla?
Molly.
Jigs?
I, Deborah.
Chris?
Molly.
Brenda?
Oh, she already.
Yep.
Deb?
Deb.
One, two, three, four.
Seven. We missed you, Bill.
Molly?
Molly.
And Jack?
And Jack had voted.
Jack, who, who?
I love them both, but I'm going to vote for Molly.
Because he nominated, that makes sense.
That's six votes for Molly and three for Deb.
That's five, five and four, isn't it? But whatever it is, still.
Did I get that wrong?
Six and three, I see.
Six and three, okay.
All right, well, with that, with that concluded, we need to elect a clerk, and I'm not sure everybody knows what a clerk is, I'm going to preemptively say that clerk is person that makes sure that the records are kept properly of these meetings, that they're posted, agendas are posted and complete, and that things like Robert's Rules, that hopefully the clerk will have that out there ready when, when issues come up. And I'm open to hearing nominations, and don't make me pick on you, so if somebody could raise their hand, it'd be really nice. Is there anybody raising their hand in the room there, Andy?
Oh, yes, yeah, Lynn.
I nominate, I'm blanking out for Priscilla.
All right, we've got one nomination for Priscilla. Do we have any others?
Don't see any here in the room.
All right, then, then I will entertain a motion to have, to have the Chair cast one ballot for, for Priscilla as clerk.
So moved.
All right. Next up is election of treasurer, this is board treasurer position, and it's not the same thing as members that look at the, at the warrants, but I would want that treasurer to, to at least do that, if that's appropriate to do. Andy, do we have any conflict, and can the treasurer also examine the warrants? Or is that separate? Because I think, is the treasurer's name on the checks?
Trying to think. I don't know if it's specific.
Yes, I see a hand up from Priscilla, maybe she has information on this, yes.
Well, what has happened in the past, is that person is only put on it because we have a regular board clerk that is assigned in, that's like usually for, like for Rockingham is, is like Kathleen Neat. Do we have a separate one for the SU? It's a question, I don't know the answer to, because what we did with Rockingham was we combined clerk and treasurer, because we, the treasurer you never use, but we may use it at this level.
I'm trying to think who the.
Andy would have to use the answer that, Jack.
Treasurer is for the SU.
The, the boards that I've served on, a person that's doing the warrants cannot sign the checks.
And that's the question, thank you, Jigs, that's very helpful.
Balance, so.
Right, no, I understand that, I'm just trying to think who signs the SU checks, because I don't know.
I don't know. It's be Rick Halli, after that.
My name used to be on some of that, but I can't remember if it was for the high school or for the SU.
That I just, you know.
Yeah.
You don't look at them anymore, so.
Well, we'll, we will, you know, the more the merrier on warrant signing, so let's, let's deal with that. I'm inclined to nominate Deb Wright, because for one thing, she's been nominated twice, and she, I, I'd like her to be part of the team.
But I'm already a warrant signer, I'd prefer to stay doing that.
All right, well.
If you don't mind.
That's fine, I wanted to make the offer, Jigs, how about you? You want to be the treasurer? You have your name on the checks?
I don't. I have no interest in that.
No interest in that, boy, that's a popular thing tonight. Let's see, how about you, Brenda? You want to be the treasurer?
Oh, there we go, seen face, yeah, no.
We're giving out a promise of a.
I'm still new.
Say that after a couple of years, Brenda, come on.
Hey, Hardy, you're, you're, it's going to be a little hard for you to do warrants, but I really want you to do them eventually. Do you want to be treasurer at least at interim, till you can figure this out?
I'm doing the warrants for, you know, the Grafton Athens School. I don't know that I want to, I got quite a bit on my plate.
Boy, this is the most popular position. It's like radioactive tonight.
I think we need to know how much it's doing.
I'll nominate Chris Kibbie to be the treasurer.
Only one left.
Well, there is that also, Chris. You can always resign this exalted position, it's kind of like the guy being ridden out of town on the rail by the sounds of it, you know?
Checking with Nicole to, just to double check right now, so. If she gets back to me, we can, maybe we can circle back.
All right. I'm going, I'm going to. Did you accept this exalted position, Chris?
I'm humbled.
Then I, then I will entertain a motion to instruct the Chair to cast one ballot for Chris Kibbie as the treasurer of the WNESU Board.
So moved, Jack.
All right, all in favor, just say aye.
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 I hear unanimity, so Chris, congratulations. Given how popular the treasurer position is, I'm going to ask the board's indulgent and put aside the election of an assistant treasurer for the moment.
Okay, table, okay.
All right. So I have a motion to table that from, from Deb?
Everyone's here.
I said, did I hear a motion for you to table it?
That's what I'm saying, yes, please, yeah, I move to table it.
That's a privileged motion, I believe, so let's just vote on doing that. Boys vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any negatives?
Right, that means, that means Jeff Carlson could be the assistant, because.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll come to that. Now, warrant signers, as it says here, are appointed by the Chair. I would really like it if Hardy and Jigs and Deb would step up to do that, if you don't mind, and if you do, please let me know.
I'm fine with it.
That's fine.
Okay.
That, that will make us all happy people.
Any, any two, correct?
Pardon me?
It's any two.
Right, any two of the three, but I want to have three people, you know, three people, if at all possible, I wouldn't mind if all of you signed it, there really is room for a third signature, but we only need two legally. Because I also know some of you have, have lives, shockingly enough, even though you signed up for school board. Item, item G is set time, date, and location of regular monthly meetings. You'll notice that we're meeting on Wednesdays at 6:30, usually it is the fourth Wednesday or third Wednesday of the month, what is this, Wednesday, I can never remember.
So second and the fourth, the second is your alternative, or altern?
So anyone have a suggestion as to when they would like to meet, if not on the second and fourth at 6:30?
Jack?
Yes.
So I don't have a problem with that, other than I'm trying to keep up with town stuff, and it's exactly the same time as the town of Westminster. So there's something going on right now, that I'd kind of like to be part of, but my family's split in the middle in one way and one way, one way and the other.
Yeah.
I get that's part of small town, but I don't know if there's room in the.
Tuesday.
I can't be here.
No, yeah, Tuesday.
But Tuesday, but Tuesday, I mean, the problem is, you guys got Mondays, Rockingham has Mondays, I don't know when. High schools have Mondays.
So there is the alternate Thursday, depending on what, so right now on.
We're second and fourth.
So on the first and third Thursday would be the only other.
I could do with the third Thursday, but the fourth Thursday is planning, and I have to do that, too, so.
I would miss a lot of Thursdays if they were.
What about the first and, what about first and third Wednesdays with that?
Is there anybody else doing first and third Wednesday?
Does that work, Andy?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I don't know what your, you know, how many meetings are going on, and, for me, I just wanted to throw that out there, because it does kind of.
No, but, but, but if, but if Westminster has things on the second and the fourth, the first and the third is open on a Wednesday, so.
Oh, I'd be happy with that if everybody else was.
Do we have consensus in the room as to the dates?
First and third Wednesday?
We're kind of going first and third Wednesday over here, but we've got two suggestions, Jack, out there. We've got first and third Wednesday, or we've got, let's say, second and, first and third Thursday.
And Thursday seemed to be a conflict for Chris, and maybe a couple others.
Yeah, okay, so maybe it's back to one.
So first and third Wednesday?
I'm going to entertain a motion. I'm going to entertain a motion that we meet on the first and third Wednesday of the month at 6:30. Is, and that those meetings shall be carried both in person and virtually at the meeting room at the Bellas Falls Union High School, since it does say date and location.
Jack, I'll move that, but can we also add to that, that with the primary one being the third Thurs, third Wednesday?
You said for third, right.
With that caveat, without objection?
Yep.
It sounds like we have something to do on a voice vote. All in favor of having the regularly scheduled monthly meetings to be held on the first and third Wednesday of the month, with the primary meeting to be held on the third, and the time to be 6:30, and the location to be the meeting room at the Bellas Falls Union High School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Not hearing any. All right, item number H, 4H, establish, in this case, it states here, Brattleboro reformer and the shopper to be used to announce school board functions and activities. And this is what I would assume would be the SU board, functions and activities, because individual boards may do their own thing. Does that sit with people? Is there any amendments to this as written?
I have something to say about the shopper.
You go right ahead there, Deb.
Everyone's using, I mean, the village trustees, like board, municipalities, and then, of course, the schools, but the shopper's gotten worse and worse. We did an advertisement for the ARPA funding program, on that meeting, that public meeting, and they didn't get it in there when it was supposed to get in there, and it knows, so we never showed up at all, and until the following week. And then the newspaper didn't even show up in my mailbox until the following Monday. So, clearly, they've got some delivery problems and also some following through on advertising, and I know they're the, they're least expensive. I'm just pointing it out there, unless you get really far ahead of the date you have to post something, we could not fall within the guidelines required.
So other boards had voted to use the shopper, and we looked into it, found that exact same thing. So we are going to have a generic posting of, basically, these are when, this is when the board meetings are, like, get it in there early so that they're posted.
Yeah.
And direct people to the website to get the agenda, just because.
Otherwise.
We know that that's not going to happen, and, and it is, I want to say for like a business card size, I think Nicole told me it's like 40 bucks.
Yeah, it's definitely the cheapest.
And so, we're going to try and post it with all the boards, like, figure out a way to do it, because otherwise, it's 40 bucks to this board, it's 40 bucks to the high school board, 40 bucks to the, and, and so, we're going to try and do.
We're trying to consolidate it somehow.
We're going to try and do one big, and here's the board meetings for this month.
Right.
Type of thing, and that.
There's no legal requirement to do this, you know?
To post them?
Boy, I wish David Clark had left.
Yes, there is.
You're getting hammered here for.
Oh, listen, he'll catch up with it on back TV.
You have to win the meetings correctly.
Yeah.
But you're not required.
Not required to pay for posting.
Put something in the newspaper, even, yeah.
No, but some of the special stuff, like annual, do you have to post annuals, things like that?
There are certain things, and.
Ladies, gentlemen? I, we, we haven't got to the point where we're adopting informal rules, and just because it's a little hard for the civilians to make out who's talking, could people both identify themselves and wait for one person to finish before the other person, and maybe even occasionally, just for jokes, you know, direct the question to the board chair, if you don't mind?
Can I, Jack, may I speak?
You're correct.
I already was, so. So, there are a couple of times when it's really important to go to posting and to warrant an annual meeting, but that doesn't apply to this board. And there are times when you're buying or selling property.
Right.
And those have to be.
Posted.
Wanted posted in exactly the right thing. And again, we don't do that with the SU board, so I would suggest that we just establish the reformer, drop the shopper out of this motion, that would, and just go with that.
I'm going to take that in the form of a motion by member Chris Kibbe. Is there a second so we can move on with that? I heard a second from Deb Wright. And is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a voice vote on the matter, and that would be to establish the Brattleboro reformer to be used to announce board functions and activities. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Not hearing any. Congratulations, that's the deal there. Committee assignments. Not everybody is all that eager to be on various committees, some, and some committees are, are oversubscribed. What I would like you all to do is to send me an email to tell me your preference. I will ask one thing, and that is that these committees may be modified somewhat. Budget and finance, and when we talk about finance, that's finance across the body of the year. It's not just budget prep, but, and it might end up including some long-term financial work. So that's item one on that. Audit, the audit committee's been sort of a nonstarter for a number of years. I would like, with the indulgence of members, to have that standing committee be audit and oversight. We've attempted several times to have oversight committees. They've tended to last a couple of meetings and then die. We really need someone to keep an eye on the ball across the body of the year. If there is no objection to those minor shifts, I will send to all of you a description of what these committees do, and ask you to sort of, one, two, three, your preferences, and we'll go with that. And by the way, that would include members of, of the Westminster folks, because these include issues of interest to them, and frankly, it would include non-voting members of this board. If they are interested in it, we'll send it out to them as well, because things like, things like a policy are really a, a multi-board committee to a fairly large extent. So with that noted, I'm going to. Yes, Deb?
On this list you're asking about, is there, is there not, just to make sure that we're not going to miss any date, point certain, a date certain on the support staff negotiations, have you assigned who's doing that? Does that, you have?
Thank you for that. That's a really, that's something we should do, and not in that form, because it's not a, and probably the continuous improvement plan team representative. Do we put, in fact, put a CIP member on, Andy, from this board? I'm, I don't recall who our CIP member was last year.
I don't know who it was last year. I wasn't privy to that. You know, there are, Priscilla has sat in on, on those meetings, and Cheryl, and they're on both, you know, other boards, but I don't, again, I don't know who was the assigned person from last year.
What?
Jack?
Yes.
Most of these committees, too, you have representatives to those committees that are assigned by the local boards to those committees.
Then. I appreciate that, because buildings and grounds is kind of a, in particular, is sort of a, there are, there are committees for buildings and grounds issues across each district, but in this case, the building and grounds that this committee, the SU manages is the, is the building where the SU offices are housed. I don't think it's anything other than that. That committee, in fact, selected the current facility that we're in two years ago, almost. Molly, you, you may recall how that process went, because I think you chaired that committee.
That's correct.
Right. So, 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 as I say, the policy is the one that is, that's, that stands all boards, but I think everything else are separate. And the teacher and support staff negotiations issue is completely correct. We do appoint a member to that, because it's a, it's a multi-, it's a multi-district negotiations committee, and I will note for the record, we've been asked to not do a lot of changes as we're doing these negotiations, even though we've concluded with the teachers. And in the spirit of that, Deb, I don't know if you're up for more punishment, but since you were on the board, on that, on that committee, would you mind rejoining as the representative for this, for this board?
No one else has a burning desire to do so.
Well, I didn't say burning desire. I, I just meant, can I drag you to the meetings?
You could do that, yes. That's like throwing my appreciation higher. I'm good.
Congratulations, you and, you and Chris Kibbe have both been drafted semi against your will. All right, um. 5G, adopt Robert's Rules of Order for small boards.
Ooh.
All right. Now, the chair's going to note something interesting, and you take it for what it's worth. The traditionally, Robert's Rules for small boards are, are for boards under 10. When we have our full, we've adopted it despite having boards as large as 12 or even 16 in the past, but I'm not sure that we're really supposed to, if you're being strict about it, but I'm still open to having it be Robert's Rules for small boards, except whenever I decide we need a little more order and ask you to go back to the formal rules.
Jack?
How do you want to?
Jack?
Yes.
In, in the current 12th edition of Robert's Rules, it's members of boards that are 12 and under, for small boards.
Thank you. That's changed and noted, and that actually makes it easy. All right, I hear, I did hear a motion, but I'm not sure from whom to adopt Robert's Rules for Small Boards.
Mr. Jase McCullough.
Awesome. Jigs, thank you for that. And I'm going to, I'm going to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So we are working with Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards. Just as a side note, as chair of the Union Elementary, United Elementary Board, we're at, we're going to be getting copies of Robert's Rules, the electronic version, to all members, and hopefully also the, the state, the compendium of state laws affecting, affecting schools, and unless there is an objection, and I, there might be, because it's, we're spending now 50 bucks, I want to try to make sure everybody has a copy of that. Is that acceptable to everyone? Looks like I've got it. Looks like I've got it not. This is very informal, so then we've got, we've got a sense of the board, that that be, that we get those to you all. All right, item six, review and approve board minutes of, fill in the blank, the last meeting that we had. What was the date of that? And do we have those minutes for everybody's? Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I never saw them.
I don't think any came out, Jack.
Okay, I, I was looking, scratching around for those and didn't see them myself, so let's, I, I'm going to move that we put that aside.
I apologize, Jack. We just have the template that we were using and just running through it without deleting things, because.
All right. I, I'm going to, does the superintendent have a report tonight? You might be doing this just to keep, catch people up on what we're, what's been going on since we met last night?
Well, I, there are a couple of things I'd like to just update the board on, and not a, a full formal report, if that's okay?
Sure.
So just real briefly, we're going to be coming out with some new protocols around COVID with, if a student is symptomatic in the building, and so that'll be coming out. We, we were anticipated to have it out yesterday, but it's still just getting wordsmithed right now, so that should be coming up this week, though. And that'll just explain to parents, like I said, if a student is asymptomatic, just the steps the nurses will take to kind of go through that. And then, just earlier today, just before, well, two things. So earlier today, I had a pleasure of attending the outstanding, the Vermont Outstanding Teachers Day, where two of our educators were acknowledged, and that was Julie Seines, who's a special educator at the middle school, and Mary Lou Masuko, who's an art teacher at the middle school. There were a ton of outstanding teachers recognized. It was virtual, but it was just great to see that, so just to make the board aware. Also, just after that, we attended the unveiling of the banner for the Bellas Falls High School State Championship, so that was a lot of, a lot of fun, just to see a lot of community out there, and the boys, you know, being celebrated. Also, wanted to announce that we have come to an agreement for a business manager, and James Vezina is the gentleman. He'll be our new business manager. He is currently finishing up as the business manager for Hartford School District, and so he's going to be joining us officially May 1st, just as he closes up shop there. But we are working with him. He's been, he's already been talking with our consultants and with our business office, and so we're working out some things so that May 1st isn't a, like, a cold start. So he's, he's been, you know, and it's been, to be, to be very honest with you, it's been great, because after we were able to just talk and come to an agreement, it was like that day, he was already talking to people. So I'm, I'm really thankful that Jim is coming on board. He's been up in Hartford for over 10 years, many, many years of experience as a business manager between New Hampshire and Vermont, so, how do you spell that? V E Z I N A.
I only got one minute left.
Would you spell that one more time, please?
V E Z I N A.
Where does Jim work?
I don't know off the top of my head, either. We're also, we had a committee meeting today for the Director of Innovation and Instruction Hiring Committee, and reviewed applicants, and so we've set an interview date for next week, so we'll be interviewing candidates next week, and hopefully getting someone on board. I think, you know, great discussion, and I think we've got some real qualified candidates, and that always is good end bag, because it makes it hard to find people. But also, just with a lot of the stuff that's been going on, we are, schools are meeting and reviewing emergency plans, and, as well as the SU, just so that we can update those, because we focused so much on, on COVID the last two years. We need to get back into just that normal planning. And then, we are finalizing stuff for summer programming, and should have stuff out soon for families. You know, the dates and themes and principals have been, and site coordinators have been contacting parents, you know, for recommendations, so. That was just it, just trying to update you guys on that stuff, so.
Jack?
All right, yes, Deb?
Yeah. That Andy had sent in an email that, about the MOA, that because of the concerns over the board forum, that the last SU meeting, that we, that the recommendation was to re-vote that item.
That was, out of clarity, that wasn't the recommendation.
Okay.
The recommendation from our legal was that this board, if it desired to take up that issue.
All right.
Oh, it was, that's how it was.
Because of the confusion over the voting form.
I, in anticipation of the issue, I will tell you what I learned, and take this for what it's worth. That traditionally retroactive challenges to forums are not allowed. However, the chair can determine that if there's obvious, there's obvious non-quorum, a candidate following meeting, make a ruling on the matter. I personally think that the idea of confirming the MOA would be a, a great thing to do. Though a concern I have to some extent is what happens if we fail to do that. But I'm willing to, I get a sense of the board as to whether they not want to review it. I will note that it's not on this agenda. And I would want to have it be on a subsequent one so we can have the Robert's Rules stuff and all the rest of whatever is required to be for you because this chair is going to make sure that you have documents and that you can make informed decisions if he does nothing else. So with everyone's indulgence, I would like to move that to the next meeting and have that discussion. And in that, in that vein, 8A has as a new business for discussion action, ratification of teachers' contracts. Now, it has been past practice that we don't have substantive items on agendas during reorganization, but I know there's a sense of urgency about this. And I'm wondering, board members did get, I believe, the, the CBA and the, the negotiated settlement page. Do, what is your pleasure? Do you want to take this up tonight, or do you feel that you need more time? Just round robin, informal inquiry.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm at the end of the table. So what I'm going to say is that I would believe that some of this might want to be taken up in executive session, possibly by some members. And, and I don't think that it would be appropriate necessarily to vote on it on the floor tonight.
All right. I've heard one. How about anyone else having a view on this?
Just a question, Jack.
Yes.
Is the SU board a signatory on the contract?
I believe it is, Jigs, because of the, we are the higher of special ed personnel, plus we are the higher of the, of the, of some specialty positions that are housed there as well. Such as the speech therapy folks, et cetera. So I believe we, we get a vote and are obligated to read that contract and to have our yea or nay on it. Question is, are you ready to do that?
Jack?
Yes.
I think it's important that we do take it up tonight and that we, we, tonight. That the teachers' contracts are coming out, are due out to them. They have to be out to them before April 15. And if we keep putting things off, we're not going to be doing that. They have already ratified. Rockingham has taken up the issue. And this is the next board to meet, and then the other boards, so that we could get that decided before contracts come out.
I, I hear you. Any other?
You had questions when you brought up the MOU from two of the board members that had their hands up, but I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, let's slide back to the MOU question, then finish up with this.
I agree with Deb that it should be probably exec session.
All right. We don't have an executive session on the, on, on this, on this agenda. And normally I'd really like to make sure that we have executive sessions warned. But that's.
Chris Kibbe is asking point of order.
Go ahead, Chris.
Are actually not supposed to be on the agenda at all.
That was, that was my.
No, you're not supposed to anticipate that there will be an executive session. However, a board can go into executive session for any item, such as negotiations, if it deems necessary. So there's, there really should, I don't know why executive sessions snuck their way back on your agenda. So it shouldn't be there. You can do it, but it's the opposite of what you said.
All right. Point taken. Thank you, Chris. Then we don't need to have it with, we don't have to have that language about executive session anticipated. So.
The item's on the agenda, so yeah.
Exactly.
I appreciate that. So, so back to two questions. Was there anyone else that had a view on, on the delay of the MOU? And I see you're.
Just a question. Are you anticipating that discussion? Will the item be to?
Ratify.
Consider whether to put it back on the agenda? Is that, is sort of a two-step process? Is that what you're saying, or is it?
Or do you just want to put it on the next?
Well, I was putting it on the agenda, and people can always vote to pass it over and, and not consider it further.
So next meeting.
I'm just trying to give everybody, there, there seems to be enough controversy about the issue that I wanted people to have an opportunity to talk about it if they wish to. And, and if ratification made those who were uncomfortable about the, about the vote the last time comfortable, I'm inclined to go there.
Okay, so it'll be on the third Wednesday next month.
And, and I would be happy to entertain a motion at that time to pass it over and be done with it, if that's what people prefer to do.
I, I had a question, but it wasn't about the MOU, Jack.
All right. Well, i- is it, is it having to do with the teacher contract or on something else, Jigs?
Something else. It was, you know, nothing, and we went through our organization at Rockingham. Nothing's mentioned about ESER, the ESER Committee. And, and of course, there's almost no communication as far as my membership of the Rockingham Board. And I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a committee, or if that's a, a something else, or, or what it is. But I, I would, I would, as a board member, I would be curious to know what it is. And, and secondly, to encourage whoever's on that and, and the superintendent to provide regular updates to the boards when they meet.
All right. Well, well.
Subject, because it's a hell of a lot of money. And I think the, you know, it's something that people, not only the boards, but the, the public should be kept abreast of.
To, to, not to cut you off at all, Jigs, but we do have a finance committee. And one of the reasons why it's financed as opposed to just budget is because this is part of our financial underpinnings. I think that's perfectly reasonable to have a ESER presentation because not everybody has, is aware of the ESER funds. And we can have that on the agenda for the next meeting and have a, just a, a review of what that is and where we stand. And that would be, that would be my preferred strategy for dealing with it. So I want us to get back now, because it was a bit out of order, to 8A, which is ratification of teacher contracts. And the question before you all was whether or not you wanted to take this up tonight. And Andy?
I, I would encourage the board to take it up tonight, a little bit on what Priscilla was talking about. With contracts coming out, what happened last year when the board decided to do the one and a half percent late in the year, contracts had already gone out. And so then new contracts had to be generated and resigned. And the business office ended up having to do twice as much work to get all the payroll done. So as much lead, as much lead time as we can have, given the state of the business office, and, and we, we've already talked about a plan. So once the contract is ratified, we're going to have a plan to get to the teachers, that this is when pay will come out, so they, they understand that. But as much time as we can have, I would greatly appreciate.
All right. If this, is there any further discussion from any member on this or a question? So that we can get to a roll call on to take this up or not?
Can I just add one thing, Jack?
Yes, absolutely.
During my time as superintendent, we did have item, business items on reorganization.
Okay. I didn't remember. That's fine.
It depended from board to board, but, and I would echo what Andy said. I know the chaos that ensues when there's a new settlement in the business office and the amount of time it takes to make all the changes because you're, there's a current year change. There's the upcoming contracts. And, and then it takes a long time just to roll the year over under the best of circumstances at the end of June. So I think it really should be.
I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a consensus that we should vote to take this up. And just to save time, I'm going to do a quick yea or nay. Shall we take this up? All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Okay, so let's continue on with 8A ratification of teacher contracts. I'll hear a motion to, to vote in the affirmative to ratify the teacher contract. And then we can start talking about it. Do I have a motion to that effect? From anybody?
Jack, I would move that we take a vote to ratify the teacher contract, but I think we need to discuss it in executive session.
All right. I'm hearing a motion to go into executive discussion, uh, executive session to discuss this. No, that's fine. All in favor of doing that? And what would be the purpose? Because, would it be because the interests of, because it's a legal matter?
It's a legal matter and, and because it's a contract issue that has not been approved by all the boards. And because it's not, or it's, it's still open to not being an official contract.
All right.
Disadvantage.
That's right.
An executive.
All right. All in favor of going into executive session to discuss this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Andy.
Thank you. And I'll take that as a retroactive friendly amendment because it's a small board. So let's do that.
Be taking action, I'm assuming, when we come out. So we're not.
Anticipation. Thank you again. We're back. It is 7:49, and the item that we were discussing in executive session was ratification of teacher contracts. I will be looking for a motion to ratify the teacher contract, otherwise known as the CBA for, for teachers for the next three years. Someone want to make a motion and preferably? Yes.
Jack, one, before we actually get to the motion, I'm sorry. Technically, because you have people on Zoom voting and people here in the room voting, you're supposed to do a roll for each one. So everyone's name has to be called and then the vote taken that way.
This is a money thing. I agree with that. Okay. So again, I'm going to do the people who are voters, who I can, I guess it's just Hardy and I are the only people that are remote who are voters here. So Hardy?
Would you mind? It would really help. And I will promise to try to be there in person going forward. We have a point of order first.
Yes.
The question, this is Cheryl, Jack. I just don't know whether we need to officially state that for the purposes of this motion, it will be a 12-person board, that it will be all voting members, including Westminster.
I hear that, I hear that as an appeal to the chair, and the answer is yes.
All right.
I would love to make the motion. So moved.
Considerate made. And, and Andy, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call for us?
Hardy?
Yes. Accept.
Lynn?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jeff is absent. Jack?
Yes.
You have 11, 11 yeses and one absent.
I declare that puppy carried then. Thank you all for the discussion and, and for a clear vote. And my apologies for delaying it procedurally by asking about whether we want to pick it up tonight. I see nothing under old business for discussion action. As I said, when it comes to the memorandum of agreement, we'll put that on for the next time around. And with that, we're to director's comments. I, I'm going to ask folks to go from, from the superintendent's left to right in the room because I don't know which that is. Kibbe?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Cheryl?
Welcome to the new board members, and thank you. That's it for me tonight.
Molly?
Yes. One of the things that I was glad to hear someone else ask for was the ESER should be on everyone's agenda. Even if maybe somebody says in a meeting, you know, we haven't met, nothing's changed since last, last meeting. I have worked harder than I did in the last couple of years on the agenda for the high school. And I've kind of, you know, everybody asked me to be the chair again, and hopefully I'm, you know, going to really make it so the next person is that the chair really has a system in place. ESER is a lot of money. It's a lot of things that are going to happen if it, if it all gets done and gets approved. And I, I think it's very important to have that on there. Negotiations, you know, negotiations are, right now feels like they're almost complete. A lot of those things that we just pass by and we don't put on the agenda because we think the agenda is either twofold or, you know, nobody wants to speak to it, or, but we have a lot of committees. And then all of a sudden, in the middle of the year, you know, nobody knows what anybody's doing because we're not, you know, we're just, we're not reporting them. So I hope that we, we get this stuff on the agendas and we get a rep from, from these different committees. I am going to ask the high school board members, either Brenda or Deb, to be the WNESU rep for the high school board. So when we come to that board, there's a report from, for what happened at the SU meeting. Because, you know, we see the, very seldom do people actually log on and, and listen to this. But at the end of the year, they want to know, you know, what we've been doing. So, and I just think it's important that we keep reporting back to our boards. And Mr. Hawes mentioned it also, but, you know, it's kind of too bad the way the years of, last couple of years have been. And I think that our kids have missed out on a lot of things where maybe we would have been a huge gym full of people watching the banner be dropped for a state championship for a football team. Those, those kids did a real good job and pushed through some, some stuff that I'm really glad that my kid was in college by the time it came through because I just can't imagine parents and kids, you know, getting through and then getting a state championship. I mean, that's just, we're just this little, little school, and it, it's pretty neat to see. And I was very happy to see the board members that were able to, to come and, and watch that because, you know, the truth of the matter is, those kids look up to us. And we may not think so, but I heard a couple of parents say, look at that, who's that over there? And, you know, I was able to say, that's a school board member. And so that was pretty nice. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations to the football team.
Deb?
Yes, yes, well said. I would like, I welcome the new members. It's great to see some, some turnover and some change of com, mindsets and those kinds of things. I'd like to see more transparency now. It's been almost two and three quarter years, and we've been through two different business managers heading into a third, a lot of problems. The audit committee was based on the business systems and audit issues. audit committee was based on the business systems and audit issues coming up and trying to deal with or trying to give some resolution to citizens who asked a lot of questions about the turmoil. We've been in it a couple of years ago. Uh, so I'm moving forward. I'd like to see that we do all of our meetings appropriately, that we and everything's transparent and we pay attention to our rules and open meeting law is very important. Um, so I'd like to see us follow those guys. And I know it's difficult. We've got 12 people. Now we have 12 people for a board. It's pretty sizable. So but, um, I'm, you know, cheering on that we do a better job this year than we've done the last. Thanks.
Brenda? Priscilla?
Yeah, um, I would echo, welcome to anybody who's new. And I'm looking forward to really a good year and a recovery period. We've had some really tough times and some tough changes with COVID. Um, I was pleased in the audit, in the gym to see that people were starting to feel a little more comfortable in interacting with each other's and, um, with the taking off of the masks and being a little bit more normal. Um, respecting those that continue to want to wear masks is important because some people are not ready for that yet and not able to, um, adjust quite as quickly as some others. So we need to be very considerate of them and just be aware and continue with kindness to all because the kind act, I read it in one of the places I stopped when I was away, a kind act is something that goes on forever. So just keep up that kindness, people. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, two things. Uh, one, um, the, uh, uh, I'm very disappointed to see the statistics, uh, from our schools in terms of the number of kids that are inoculated and boosted, uh, against COVID because, uh, you know, you start taking off the mask, start meeting in groups, and you have over 50% of the kids unvaccinated. We're gonna have a continuing problem. So I I can't urge enough. I know our teachers have done a great job in in having themselves vaccinated, but we really need to work as each board, uh, to encourage, uh, parents and children to get those inoc- inoculations. Uh, the second item is I did speak at the Rockingham Board on Monday night, critical of the negotiating process that went on with the teachers. I don't want to repeat a lot of stuff, but, I think that, uh, um, first of all, uh, having done this in the past and and never wanting to do it again, um, your your superintendent has to lead the boards. Uh, the superintendent needs to provide the boards changes that he would like to see or she would like to see in the contract that would make the management of the enterprise, uh, easier. Uh, I was told, uh, that in this particular teacher's contract, we came to the table with and asked for basically nothing. Uh, I think that's a mistake. Second thing is, uh, and Mr. Kibbe is sitting here. He was the coach when I was in the process. Uh, if you went into a session and the either you or the other side didn't modify your position, you were done. Okay? And, uh, I think that, again, I've heard, uh, at the board, uh, level that, uh, meeting after meeting after meeting, there was no change in positions. And I think that so the process should have gone to mediation a lot sooner. Uh, and, uh, and the other thing was I was surprised to see on that sheet that Cheryl, uh, referred to was that we agreed to monetary items before the big one. And I think that the, um, uh, the, uh, as a negotiating technique, I really think that on monetary issues, it all should be done when they agree to the salary, uh, increases. And, uh, because I think it gives it gives the board a little more negotiating room. Uh, when you give that up ahead of time, uh, there ought to be a quid pro quo. And, uh, uh, I didn't see that. So I would I would encourage the the new group, uh, that might have the same members, uh, to, uh, uh, consider how they approach it and, uh, and how they're led in the process. So thank you very much.
All right. I'll go up on the screen. Karen?
Well, it's always a pleasure to hear how our schools are managed. That's all I'm wanting to say. And, uh, being a new person in the block, um, I'm learning a lot.
Brenda?
Yes, welcome to the new members. And I am looking forward to this, uh, term, this season because, uh, we've gone through some changes and some uncomfortable times. And this is a time of transition. So looking forward to it.
Pam?
I'm just happy to be here, um, and to contribute, um, from my vantage point, um, as a parent, as an educator, and as a board member. Thank you.
Hardy?
As a new member, I'm happy to be here and, uh, I have a lot to learn, like I'm sure all of the other new members do. So, um, we're ready to move forward. Thank you.
Jack, you're you're last but not least.
All right. Um, a couple of quick points. One, uh, just to be clear, uh, it may not have made people feel happier about it, but we actually did come into the, uh, negotiations with a bit of a laundry list of things we wanted to change. There was not a lot of consensus about some of them. And I think that the fact that we didn't carry many of them or really any of them forward is is an issue. Uh, uh, I would say beyond that, uh, I wanted to just speak briefly about the role of the chair. This may prompt a move to vacate the chair, but I wanted to let you know my thoughts about it. I think that the role of the chair is to keep, uh, the conversation productive because, uh, we focus on issues and don't get sidetracked. We can save, uh, 10 minutes and I'm committed to, uh, killing the four-hour meeting on a permanent basis, uh, to keep conversations informed. And that means to make sure you actually have packets like we used to in the old days. Chris Kibbe will remember when we did packets. Uh, we need to do that again. Keep conversations inclusive. Uh, often in these meetings, uh, we want to avoid having one or two people, uh, dominate the meetings. And one of the great points of having me as chair is that I'm obliged to shut up. So I'll try to do that going forward. Uh, and, uh, I I will, however, call on members who, uh, sit in the corner to ask for their opinion if they're not, uh, ready to give one simply because I want everybody to be involved. Uh, we have a number of things that need to get cleaned up. We often are in reactive mode and I would like us not to do that going forward. Uh, we've mentioned ESER. We've mentioned, uh, the the whole pro- the financial oversight issues that we've occasionally neglected. We need a number of things. We need to have a yearly schedule so people know what we're going to be talking about. A lot of things that we discuss, we know six, nine months in advance. Uh, you can't be in charge. You can't discharge your responsibility if you're only finding out what you're doing at the last moment. Uh, we need to make sure that members, if they have issues, that they're presented, uh, for consideration. And they may not be ones the chair's in favor of, but they'll be put on the agenda. Uh, we need to make certain that, uh, all members', uh, priorities are represented in the discussions and no one is shut out. Um, we need to finish our negotiations and we need to do it soon. We need to revamp the articles under which this board governs. We suspended the rules a couple of years ago and it's led to unending confusion about who's even on the board and who can vote and what a quorum is and a whole lot of other things that frankly could be cleaned up if we revise our, uh, our, uh, bylaws. And we need to to do that. Uh, and we need to have a long-term planning process. We need to keep our, as much work shove it to committees as humanly possible because people have better things to do than to discuss in detail all things. I assume we all trust each other and if we report stuff out, we can make decisions quickly. And like I said, it's 8:07 and we're gonna call this meeting to a conclusion, but I really want to make certain that we set as close to a hard two-hour limit as possible.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, um, we just need to set the next meeting date.
The next meeting date will be that, uh, proverbial second. When's? Third, excuse me?
Third.
First Wednesday.
Thank you. Third.
Jack, it's Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
You need a teacher roster approved, though.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need to meet on the first.
Which is the sixth of April.
Yep. Thank you for that. Very good.
Sorry?
Yes.
April, April 6th at 6:30?
That was a business item I sometimes included in the XU.
Thank you very much for that, Chris. You're absolutely right. So, uh, we'll meet on the 6th at 6:30. If you have agenda items, get them to me ASAP because the last thing we want to avoid are last-minute insertions because it just means nobody can actually discuss anything in an informed way. Um.
Sorry, Andy, last thing on that. We are posting on Thursday. So, like, we we have to post the Thursday before.
31st of April.
We're doing that as a regular so that we're always on time. So if people have agenda items, they should get them to you before that time. That's all.
All right.
On Wednesday.
All right. Uh, the the one of just quick final point is one thing we I want people to start thinking about is a retreat. Want to do it sooner rather than later. And boards that are aligned, like the elementary school boards, uh, boy, it'd be really nice if you guys can, uh, at least have some of your meetings in common on the same night. I'm dedicated to cutting down the number of evenings Andy Haas has to do a long-distance commute back to, uh, his small hamlet in New in New Hampshire. So be thinking about that, folks. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this guy. All right. All in favor, turn off your computers or walk out of the building.